Okay. All right, let's get started. This is the July 7th meeting of the Planning Board of Hillsborough Township. Please rise for the Pledge of Legions.
(inaudible). And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the breathing of justice for all.
Okay, this meeting has been duly advertised according to Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975, otherwise known as the Sunshine Law. Roll call, please.
Mr. Peason?
Yes, here.
Secretary Julian?
Here.
Mr. Conard?
Here.
Mr. Wagner?
Here.
Ms. Beckerina?
Here.
Deputy Mayor, Mayor Sarachi. Mayor Delcourt?
Here.
Vice Chair, Dr. Maroli.
Here. Okay. We have no minutes, correct? Disposition of resolutions, there are three resolutions that you have in front of you. First is Montgomery Development LLC, File 05 PB 19 SR. It's a 2016 extension request.
Mr. Chairman, the eligible members are yourself, Mr. Julian, the mayor, Mr. Wagner, Mr. Peason, and Ms. Beckerina. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
We need a second.
Second.
For the record, Deputy Mayor Carl Sarachi has arrived. Thank you. Roll call.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Peason?
Yes.
Ms. Beckerina?
Yes.
Secretary Julian?
Yes.
Mayor Delcourt?
Yes.
Vice Chair, Dr. Maroli.
Yes. Okay. The second one is Terrace Industrial Park, 08 PB 08 MJF. Again, a 2016 extension request.
The eligible members are the chair, the secretary, the mayor, Mr. Wagner, Mr. Peason, and Ms. Beckerina.
So moved, Mr. Chairman. Second.
All right. Roll call.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Peason?
Yes.
Ms. Beckerina?
Yes.
Secretary Julian?
Yes.
Mayor Delcourt?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sarachi?
Yes.
No, he can't, he was not present.
He can't vote on this, he was not present. And the chair.
Vice Chair, Dr. Maroli.
Yes. Okay, the second one is Terrace Industrial Park, 08 PB 08 MJF. Again, a 2016 extension request.
The eligible members are the chair, the secretary, the mayor, Mr. Wagner, Mr. Peason, and Ms. Beckerina.
So moved, Mr. Chairman. Second.
All right. Roll call.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Peason?
Yes.
Ms. Beckerina?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sarachi?
No.
Secretary Julian?
Yes.
Mayor Delcourt?
Yes.
Vice Chair, Dr. Maroli.
Yes. Okay. The last is WSH Enterprises Incorporated, amended final, File 08 PB 15 MJF. Also a 2016 extension request.
Same people, Mr. Chairman, for the last two, yourself, Mr. Julian, the mayor, Mr. Wagner, Mr. Peason, and Ms. Beckerina.
Motion?
So moved. I'll second.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Peason?
Yes.
Ms. Beckerina?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sarachi?
No.
Secretary Julian?
Yes.
Mayor Delcourt?
Yes.
Vice Chair, Dr. Maroli.
Yes. Okay. The last is WSH Enterprises Incorporated, amended final, File 16 PB 15 MJF.
Also a 2016 extension request. Same people, Mr. Chairman, for the last two, yourself, Mr. Julian, the mayor, Mr. Wagner, Mr. Peason, and Ms. Beckerina.
Motion?
So moved. I'll second.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Peason?
Yes.
Ms. Beckerina?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sarachi?
No.
Secretary Julian?
Yes.
Mayor Delcourt?
Yes.
Vice Chair, Dr. Maroli.
Yes. Okay. I don't see any planning board, other planning board business committee reports, no. Is there any other business from the floor that's not on the agenda? Seeing none. We have no consideration of ordinances, so we're going to go to the public hearing. We're going to change the order to get some of the quicker applications done first. We're going to start with Glenn Gary, then RB, then Rets Partners, and last, Dr. Ramaswamy. So Glenn Gary, so Glenn Gary, GGR E Company, File 15 PB 04 MR, Block 182, lots 10, 11, 12, 45, and 46, 95, Hamilton Road. Applicants seeking minor subdivision with waivers to reconfigure lot lines by merging all five lots totaling 238.7 acres, then subdividing a lot in the southeasterly corner to create one lot consisting of approximately 25.494 acres, parentheses, proposed lot 46, with the remaining lot, parentheses, proposed lot 11, approximately 213.25 acres of remaining land on property in the M, which is the mining zoning district. The Environmental Commission review was March 23rd of 15, adjourned from June 9th, and requesting an adjournment, and do we have an extension?
Mr. John Marmora for the applicant, Mr. Vice Chairman. I submitted that to Mr. Bernstein just a few minutes ago.
Okay. The length of that extension is?
September 30th.
September 30th. Originally, there was a date, we don't have a date yet, is there, we have time on the calendar for?
Yeah, the next available meetings are September 1st and September 8th. And the extension was till September 30th?
September 30th.
Okay, so. Do you have a preference?
September 1st if it's available. I hope to have revised plans, and we have a couple of competing interests here, but I hope to have them all aligned by then, or at least 10 days before, so the plans can be.
Do we need a voice vote, or is that sufficient?
Motion, Mr. Chairman, to extend the application to September 30th, and to set it down for, you know, a September 1st, 2016 hearing date without further notice.
So moved. I will second.
Second.
We need a roll call.
Yeah.
Yep, roll call.
Mr. Peason?
Yes.
Secretary Julian?
Yes.
Mr. Conard?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Ms. Beckerina?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sarachi?
Yes.
Mayor Delcourt?
Yes.
Vice Chairman, Dr. Maroli.
Yes. Okay, Mr. Marmora, you're also representing RB.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman, Mr. Mayor.
I just need to introduce.
John Marmora for the applicant.
Yes, I need to introduce the application. This is RB Manufacturing LLC, File 16 PB 09 MSR, Block 201, Lot 11, at 799 Route 206. Applicants seeking minor site plan approval to allow placement of a new 14-foot diameter by 25-foot high, 17,000-gallon fiberglass vertical storage tank on property in the LI, which is the Light Industrial District. The Environmental Commission review was just June 27th of 16. Yes, go ahead, counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm under strict orders from Mr. Bernstein not to take up your time answering questions you might not be asking, so I'll waive.
I wish it were that easy.
Mind reader, yes, good.
I will telegraph that I'll waive a closing statement, and what I would like to do is introduce my two witnesses and have them both sworn. I have, from the applicant, Mr. Matthew DeCicco, and of course, Mr. Hybel is well-known to you, he's our civil engineer.
Gentlemen, you want to raise your hands. Testimony about to give the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
You spell, state your name, spell your last names for the record, please.
Microphone, please, can you speak into the microphone so we can get it?
Absolutely. Matthew DeCicco, D-E-C-I-C-C-O.
Robert Hybel, professional engineer, Ben Cleve, engineer.
Mr. DeCicco, would you just briefly explain to the board, you can sit, we have a video there. Could you just briefly explain to the board what your relationship is to the applicant, RB Manufacturing?
I'm the plant engineer.
Okay, and you're familiar with this project?
I certainly am.
Mr. Hybel, I know is well-known to you.
Yes.
Mr. Hybel, would you introduce yourself and explain what your relationship with the project is?
Yes, this is an application that we appeared before the planning board two years ago, and at that point, we were granted approval to build a concrete pad 31 by 17, and to place a storage tank on top of the pad, along with some railroad tracks. The railroad tracks were built, the concrete pad was constructed, and the tank went up. That particular tank was 35 feet high, adjacent, but still on top of the same concrete pad. The applicant now proposes to put a second tank. It's 12 feet in diameter and 25 feet in height. In order to do that, the first, he has to actually put some structural steel in the tank and pour another concrete slab, making it simple, on top of the existing concrete slab, but we're not disturbing any ground, there's no additional impervious surface whatsoever. Mr. DeCicco and I did appear before the Environmental Commission. Mr. Julian was present, as well as the other members, as reported in the file. The applicant will explain what the type of material is in the tank. I submitted the application to the other three agencies, haven't heard from any of them yet, the Somerset County Planning Board, that should be exempt, it was exempt two years ago. I submitted the application back to Somerset Union Soil Conservation for an exemption. Once again, we're not disturbing any ground, so I certainly expect that, and I submitted it back to the DNR Canal Commission, once again, for an exemption. So this is a tank on top of a concrete pad that was approved by this board two years ago. There are no variances, and it's a minor site plan application.
Thank you. By good, there were four reports submitted, the fire safety, I can ignore.
Oh, microphone, please.
The fire safety, I think we can ignore because it was a no comment, so there are three reports, we'll just address the issues raised. The first was Mr. White's engineering review, and I believe there are two questions. Number one, I'll ask Mr. DeCicco, will there be any changes to the grading at the site?
There'll be no ground disturbance or grading.
And the second question was whether there would be any operational changes at the site as a result of this?
This project is a project of convenience for our operation. There'll be no additional employees, no additional parking, no additional, no real change to the operation other than convenience.
Okay. The Environmental Commission raised the question of whether TCPA registration was required. Have you looked into that?
I have, and I would like to be able to blame my administrative assistant or secretary for a typographical error, but unfortunately, I did it myself. In the project description, I described the chemical as being 37% hydrochloric acid. I had a loss for where that came from, it's actually 30%, it varies between 30 and 32. I have some analysis that I had submitted to the planning board, so it is not a chemical that is covered by TCPA, so we would not be part of that program.
That was letter June 17th?
Correct.
Right, okay.
And then, I think, the two questions Mr. Maske raised, number one, there appears to be a discrepancy, originally approved two years ago was a 35,000-gallon tank, and there apparently is a 40,000-gallon tank there.
Again, a problem of our own creation. The tank itself is 40,000 gallons, to be perfectly correct. The usable amount is about 35,000, it's 35 feet tall. I'm sure that I created that problem as well, but it's installed, it's 40,000.
Just for clarification, the height and the diameter of the tank was the same as the board approved, but apparently, instead of being able to hold 35,000, it could hold up to 40,000, although it does hold 35,000. So it is the same tank that the board previously said.
Right.
And if the board approves this, Mr. Hybel, you would correct that on the plans?
Yes, that was actually on the plans two years ago, but the answer is yes.
And we would correct on our architectural submission. Originally, they had submitted a larger diameter, we're scaling it down, so we would correct that on the plan as well.
Okay. The last question Mr. Maske raised was, what are your testing procedures, safety measures?
Well, we have full security, full fans, closed circuit TV, and we would comply with all of the EPA, DEP requirements for testing. Very much the same as the last tank that was installed.
Thank you. Mr. Vice Chairman, I have nothing more than that. Unless there are questions from the board, that completes our application.
I had just one question about the TCPA, which is the Toxic Catastrophe Prevention Act program. One of the thresholds for the hydrochloric acid is 5,600 pounds, okay, that wasn't addressed, how many pounds?
It's 5,600 pounds of 37%.
Right.
Anything less than 37% does not fall.
Right.
In this case, our chemical is 30%.
Right, and so this is a, not, this is an and or an or threshold? I mean, if it?
It's a percentage, and then, based on the amount. So you're allowed to have up to, I believe it's 5,000, five or seven?
Well, it says 5,600 pounds. We'd say we've been talking about gallons, I'm just wondering, it says here, 5,600 pounds, how does that equate?
It's 10 pounds a gallon, so if you had under that threshold, you can have under that threshold at that concentration, but once you reach that limit at that concentration, then you become part of the program. So. The way the law's written, at that threshold, at that concentration, you can have pretty much on the limit.
Mr. White, that's acceptable?
Yes.
Yep, okay. Okay.
So it's 30% instead of 37%?
Correct, that's my error, yes.
Neil, did you have any other Environmental Commission comments?
Yeah, I guess the only other things for the record, I know we talked about, so it's, you're not, you're not required under TCPA, but you're gonna, you're going to update your DPCC, your Discharge Prevention Contamination Countermeasures Plan.
Absolutely.
You're not subject to SPCC because it's not oil, and then, you're also going to be required to go for NJDEP air permit.
Absolutely.
That will remain the same.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And will all be submitted to the township before we commission a plan.
Okay. Yeah, I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Any other comments or questions from the board? Do we open this to the public? Okay, we need a motion to open to the public, please.
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's open to the public. If anyone has a question for this, either of these witnesses, you can come forward at this time. Seeing none, close to the public?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Okay, we're close to the public. Ready for a motion?
I'll make a motion.
To approve? Okay, let me just read.
I don't know. To approve application RB Manufacturing LLC, File 16 PB-09-MSR, Block 201, Lot 11, 799 Route 206.
Second.
This includes meeting all the requirements of the professionals from the township and the testimony by both of the applicant's witnesses.
Absolutely. We consent for that condition.
Thank you.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Peason?
Yes.
Secretary Julian?
Yes.
Mr. Conard?
Yeah.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes. Ms. Beckerina?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sarachi?
Yes.
Mayor Delcourt?
Yes.
Vice Chair, Dr. Maroli.
Yes.
Thank you very much, and we appreciate the courtesy of helping us on the agenda.
Okay, so, next up is the RETS Partners LLC, 2016 variances, File 16 PB 06 SRV, Block 178.02, Lot 421, formerly known as Block 178 Lot 21. Southwest intersection of Route 206 and Raider Boulevard. Applicants seeking to amend relief previously granted for minimum front yard setbacks at Raider Boulevard of 24.7 feet is proposed, 25 feet was previously granted, and Greenfields Lane, 22.7 feet proposed, 23 feet previously granted. Previous approval for a preliminary and final major site plan, bulk variances and waivers granted under application number 15 PB 06 SRV, resolution dated June 25th of 15, 2015. Property is under construction for a childcare facility with parking improvements on property in the GB District with the ASD District. The Environmental Commission agenda, this was on the agenda of June 27th of 16. So we have a brick issue.
Thank you. My name is Mike O'Grohanek, I'm an attorney at Moro Savo, Cameron Grant &amp; Shaw in Somerville. I'm on behalf of the applicant, Rets Partners LLC, and as you reiterated accurately, this is the Kitty Academy that's being built, and this application seeks 0.3 foot of an additional variance to allow for a full brick facade rather than a half-brick facade. So unless there's any other questions, I'd like to introduce Mr. Hybel, who's already been sworn in, to explain the reasons behind the change.
Do we now want all Mr. Hybel's qualifications?
Yes.
For the 10,000?
Yes, this is an application that the board once again granted site plan approval. During the site plan approval, there was a setback variance granted from both of the roads, Greenfields Lane.
Is that microphone on?
Kaz, is that coming up?
Kaz, it's okay? Good.
Okay.
And Raider Boulevard. Construction commenced, the building is, the foundation of the building is in, as is the normal procedure, we do a survey. When we did the survey, something occurred, so I spoke to the applicant. The plans that were submitted to the building department had the two-inch thin brick on it. The applicant thought that he could put a full brick on it instead of the thin brick, and I informed them that that was a variance. So his choices were, he can do what was on the building permit plans, put the thin brick, or actually go back to the planning board, we're here tonight, to put a full four-inch brick. So the ledge that was built in the foundation would support a full brick, but in order to put the full brick, the board would have to grant the additional variances. So it's an additional two inches, I've asked for three inches in case something happens along the way. So the building is the same size, same shape, all the improvements on the property have not changed. If the board grants the variance, he'll order the full brick. If the board denies the variance, he'll put the thin brick, which was what was on the building permit plans.
Yeah, so the spec was the two-inch?
Yes, it was.
Mr. White?
I think it's a two-brick solid load, I don't know. You've been sitting on that one all day.
Should I ask you again? Mr. White, you want to say it again? Dave and Mr. Maske, no. Okay. Any comments, questions from the board?
Can't top that.
Can't top that? We still need to open, yes, we do, okay, we will open to the public, motion to open to the public?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No, eyes have it. Any questions from the public for this witness? Motion to close, seeing none?
So moved. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No. Eyes have it. Four-inch brick it is.
We have a motion. We just closed public.
Oh, I'm sorry, we closed public. Oh, I jumped the gun.
We have a motion to, if the board wished to make a motion to approve the additional variance request to allow for a four-inch brick facade.
Cut that out, Kaz, out of the tape.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Peason?
Yes.
Secretary Julian?
Yes.
Mr. Conard?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Ms. Beckerina?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sarachi?
Yes.
Mayor Delcourt?
Yes.
Vice Chair, Dr. Maroli.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Four brick, four-inch brick it is. Okay.
All right, Mr. Singer, try to top these two on time.
All right, there we go.
You don't do our best. You got three and a half minutes, David.
I was quick there, the board lost, I woke up.
I had no chance of breaking the record for the shortest meeting ever, so that's out the window.
I did have a five-minute.
Five minutes?
Yeah.
Okay. So last up is Dr. Kumar Ramaswamy, 668 Route 206, File 16 PB 04 SRV, Block 178, Lot 16, 668 Route 206. Revised plans submitted June 27th of 16. Applicants seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval, bulk variances for relief from minimum lot width, maximum front yard setback, minimum FAR, and design waivers to demolish the existing structures and construct a two-story medical office building with parking, lighting, stormwater improvements for property located in the GA or Gateway A zoning district within the SAD overlay district. The Environmental Commission review was May 23rd of 16. Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Continued from June 20, June 9th, yes.
Mr. Chairman, for purposes of the record, before Mr. Singer introduces himself, two members of the board who were not present at the last meeting have filed a certification indicating that they have reviewed the applicable video recording, that being Mr. Conard and Deputy Mayor Sarachi, so they are both eligible to vote this evening if this application completes.
So everyone's eligible?
Everybody on the board is eligible to vote.
Very good. Okay, let's proceed.
Good evening, members of the board, Mr. Chairman. My name is David Singer, from the law firm of Velas Singer Martinez, and I'm representing Dr. Kumar Ramaswamy for this application. Do we need to re swear, Mr. Ingram, or?
No. Mr. Bernstein, is that necessary?
Can I just remind the witness that he was previously sworn at the June 9th hearing, and he is still under oath?
Yes.
So, for the benefit of the board, we're not going to go through everything all over again, we're going to pick up on the revised plans, and I'm going to ask Mr. Ingram to describe the revisions that were done based upon the recommendations of the board last night.
Just for the record, before Mr. Ingram, could Mr. Ingram indicate for the record his full name, spelling his last?
Wayne Ingram, I-N-G-R-A-M.
Thank you. So if you could please describe to the board the changes that were made to the site plan?
So what I put up on the wall is a colorized rendering of the updated site plan that we presented to the board. We, again, tried to take into account the requests to try and get more in conformance with the zone and the, and the plan standards.
Okay, we're going to mark it. Mark it, I guess it would be, because that's one, so, A2?
A2, yes. Mr. Ingram, just for the record, while you're putting this sticker up, just indicate for the record what A2 represents.
It's a colorized rendering of the site plan.
Thank you.
Can you indicate the date, please?
Plan is dated June 2nd, 2016.
Thank you.
So the main changes that we did was to change the layout of the building from being a long, thin strip along the property line to a two-story structure and tried to push it up to the road as much as possible, and thereby shifting the parking to the rear of the site. It did a few things to improve our conformance with the standards of the, of the zone. We hide a lot more of our parking, we've increased our buffer to the property to the south, we've gone up to the two stories, so from an architectural perspective, we're much more in conformance with those, those standards. And we tried, we also relocated the trash enclosure to the west end of the parking lot so that a trash truck will have direct access to it without having to remove anything from, you know, a side enclosure and bring it into the aisle. That's, I mean, essentially the, the major changes that have taken place. It has helped to reduce our footprint a bit, given us some more green space and buffer to the, again, to that property to the south. So we believe this is hopefully a little bit more in conformance with what the, the zone is looking to improve upon. And with that, if you like, we can go into the, the review letters.
Sure, actually, let's, I was just going to move the other, mark the other exhibit as A3.
And that is part of the packet, I don't know.
Right.
Mark it anyway. Sure. And A3 is the elevation sheet three of four for the architectural plans that was submitted with the plan set.
So just so I'm clear, though, the, the top view on that is, is basically the side yard view, correct? And the bottom is what you would see from 206 on a sort of a front view?
Yes, correct. The front elevation is facing Route 206, side elevation is facing the north into the parking lot. And on A4 of four, which was part of the application, shows a design that intended basically to dress up the other sides of the building so that it wasn't, you know, the property to the south wasn't staring at a blank wall like the, the initial proposal.
Mr. Ingram, could you please address the comments in the June 28th, 2016 letter from David Maskey, the township planner?
Yes. So the three variances that are identified, the first is minimum lot width, again, that's the same one we described in the, our first hearing, is an existing condition. The second is exceeding the maximum front yard setback. And again, for the reasons testified, we did try and shift the building as much as possible forward, but what we, we've come to in our discussions with the DEP, they are determining that, that low spot in the front yard, which we said we couldn't go into for various reasons, we cannot, because it is part of the floodplain. There is a pipe in there, which is basically hidden, but after our first meeting, we went back, we looked around, we found the pipe. So it basically puts a floodplain elevation at elevation 71. So we're going to be obtaining a permit from the DEP to take care of that. They anticipate no problems, it's really just a net fill issue, we're not in any stream buffers or anything like that. But because of that, it's one further reason why we can't bring the building any further The third variance is not providing the minimum floor area ratio, which, the building we actually presented here is slightly larger than the, the previous approval, simply because we need more hallway space. Now that we're not a long, thin strip where everyone has direct access, we have to have hallways interior to the building, so the building itself is a little bit larger. But we believe that's the, a reasonably sized building that we can accommodate suitably on the site. I would identify a fourth variance that we didn't initially realize, but when the building was reconfigured, we weren't sure until the last minute what the architectural plan was going to look like. And once they gave us the second floor, we realized it was going to be a full second floor, not reduced in size because of the hallways. So it actually takes our gross square footage up to 9,200 square feet instead of the 8480, which was in our parking schedule. That would result in a parking demand of 37 spaces where we're providing 34. What I would note in favor of that, though, is that the square footage is of actual usable spaces in this building, has actually been reduced, because we have much more area attributed to hallways, which were not part of the original plan. So even though it technically requires a variance, since the gross square footage is, is the basis of parking demand, realistically, we have less area on this plan devoted to actual use. So frankly, we believe if it was, if it was suitable before, it should be suitable now since those units are actually smaller. There's a couple ways we could deal with that. Our preference would be to ask for the waiver. If possible, we could also propose to reduce the parking stall width to nine feet, which would allow us to accommodate the extra three stalls. Both of those would be options, but again, we would prefer to request the waiver since, from a practical perspective, there is a lot less usable area in the building.
Sorry, how many spaces are you providing now?
34 and 37 would be required.
Okay. Thanks. Can you explain the difference from the prior application with regards to design waivers?
Sure, I think, again, we've tried to reduce those as much as possible. The ones that are listed, we agree with as being required. If you like, we can go through them individually, but really, I think we improved this by increasing some of the landscaping, increasing a lot of the architectural standards which were looked for in the, the prior proposal, and we've, I think our biggest change is the reconfiguration to, to kind of shrink the building in terms of its dimensions, but come up to that second floor, should provide better screening of the parking area, fit a lot more with the, the intent of the zone. And also, again, we've improved that side yard setback and the buffer area to that property to the south. I think the, the one, some we'd like to touch on, G5 about lighting, notes that lighting shall be minimum wattage metal halide. We proposed LED lighting, I don't know if that's the board's preference, we can switch to metal halide if it's preferred, but we thought the LED would be a superior alternative, but we're open to any.
That's more a color thing, I'm not sure what kind of degrees Kelvin you're looking at with your LEDs. There's vast differences in LEDs now, it used to be a super bright white, now they have it so it's a little, they can get down to about 4,000 degrees Kelvin. That's probably what they're looking for is more of a yellowish light because of the building types they're looking for. They didn't want that stark white light lighting up the buildings.
And the manufacturer indicated that if that was the concern, they could address that and provide that type of lighting, so we, we'd be happy to do that, just would prefer to do the LED as opposed to the metal halide.
Yeah. Mr. Maskey?
That's fine.
Yeah. Okay.
And the other comments under J, number four, basically identifies that the driveway and side yard shall occupy no more than 30% of the lot frontage. Again, just because of our, our lot width, which we already know is too narrow, it's kind of unavoidable to exceed this requirement, simply because, you know, the width that we have compared to what a minimum driveway would have to be is not one in which we could But we agree with all the other standards. With regard to the signage, we did provide a detail, was not the scale, but it was dimensioned of the freestanding sign. The reason we haven't provided signs for the building is that we don't know, based upon who the doctor tenants may be, what their sign would consist of. We would certainly agree, though, that the, the standards that were suggested at a minimum to be provided, we would certainly would comply with, but at this time, we just don't know what those, what those signs will look like.
Is that necessary to specify at this point? Preferable, but?
If, if they come in and they want to do something different, they would have to go, sorry, if, if they come in with something other than what complies with the ordinance, then they would have to go to the sign review committee to have that approved. As long as they're stipulating that any signage that comes in will comply with the ordinance, I think we can accept that for now.
Okay. Thank you.
We have no objection. And I can switch over to the, the engineering review letter. We can be fairly brief on this. I think as we testified last time, under item two, we'll provide cross-access, but we'll have to do it in a way that it's more of a note rather than a dedicated area, since we don't know what the neighboring lots, how they will develop. Number three, we have proposed the right-of-way dedication, that is now shown on the plans. Number four, the zone requires screening of the parking areas. We think between the building and our landscaping, we had provided that, but if the board would request any further screening, fencing, whatever would be preferred, we have no objection to adding that.
Was there, was there any discussion with the neighbors on, on the screening part?
No, we had not specifically approached them. I, I think, under this particular comment, I think we're basically looking at screening from the roadway.
Roadway.
So, you know, again, since the building basically covers, you know, majority of the view, we're really only talking about the northern side of parking, which has a basin adjacent to it. We could probably put a fence there if that's preferred, so that, that is the board's preference, we can provide that.
There's a couple trees that are proposed between the basin and the parking lot, correct?
Yes.
How about we fill it in with some evergreen material and make it almost like a living wall?
That's perfectly acceptable. Item five regarding site distance, we haven't shown it, but it is a DOT road, and we're going to have to provide that as part of our DOT application, and they really will have the final say on where the driveway is, if it's safe.
The reason we want that is because of our, the sign, the ground mount sign you can put out front.
And we will certainly make sure that that is clear of any site triangles. No objection.
Mr. Maskey's help later on.
We haven't provided under six, we're, again, proposing no loading zone just because of the type of use that we're envisioning here. Item seven, as we mentioned, the trash enclosure, we think in this revised scheme is in a preferred location, it'll have direct access at the rear of the parking lot for pickup, as opposed to having striped area where the can will have to be taken out and put in the, in the parking lot for pickup. A front load truck will have the ability to just pick it up, put it right back, and, and leave. Item eight, we would request to contribute to the sidewalk fund, again, for the reasons mentioned in the previous hearing, about the, the lack of accessibility for sidewalk along the frontage due to the steep drop-off. And item nine, we have no objection. Grading number one, the wall that we have proposed is one we've done in the same design in the past, we can provide some additional detailing of how we would do the, the wall anchoring, but we, we can provide that additional detailing as necessary. Also, we'll comply with two and three. Under stormwater management, we really only have two things that we need to address, everything else we will comply with. So what was asked under the previous meeting was that we analyze what the off-site drainage was that's heading to our property and beyond because of concerns for the neighbor to the south. Again, we do believe our application would result in, in that water being cut off from that property, and our report did show a reduction. There's questions regarding the capacity of the system in the state highway. There's a 12-inch pipe that we're not proposing to connect to, the pipes that we're proposing are 18 inches. We can certainly analyze those for capacity, and in the end, we're, we're kind of bound by the downstream pipes of the DOT, but what I can say is that if it's our pipes are constricting, we'll upsize. And regardless, after that, if there is a downstream constriction, what'll end up happening is the water will just back up, and it's going to flow in the exact same manner that it's flowing now, but that'll only be if, if there's a backup in the DOT system. Basically, that system discharges just one property south at the stream, at the south end of the neighboring property. So whether that water enters across the front or into the stream, I don't think in either event, it's going to do anything detrimentally to the neighbor, because it's the same amount of water or less that will be heading to him in either scenario.
What's the flow pattern right now? Don't you have like, basically piggyback driveway culverts? So the driveway culvert from your property, the water comes down to a low area, just north of your driveway, existing driveway, and it enters a culvert, then comes out to, and discharges to the low area that the EP has identified as wetlands?
Well.
And then goes into adjacent neighbor's driveway culvert? And that's where it was flooding up over his driveway?
Right, so the issues, well, actually, it goes in two locations. Some of the water heads across the front and goes into the inlets out into the street, and then there's kind of a break where it would come and go into that low ravine where the neighbor has it. One of the problems, I think, is that the pipe that the neighbor has, which was buried, is part of the problem of why it's flooding, and two, it's only a 12-inch pipe. So the pipe that, that's there is part of the problem in that it was constructed too small to begin with, but again, there's not anything we can do since that was constructed by the neighbor on their own property as an attempt to mitigate their, their flooding issues.
As part of your new proposed drainage improvements, what are you proposing?
We're going to be taking all of that water and piping it to the, to the state system, which will take it down to the culvert rather than trying to put it in that hole that's upstream of the neighbor's driveway. So again, we can't say we're going to solve his flooding problems, that water's still going to reach the stream, but we can at least take it past the, the driveway, which should only help to improve his conditions of his driveway.
Especially during the more frequent events, unlike last Friday's event, where we got three inches in two hours?
Yeah, absolutely.
But the more frequent events, the 10-year storm, 25-year storm, you should have capacity.
Should be a vast improvement, yeah. The only other item we wanted to address was the roof leaders from the building to the basin. We did try and run that scenario. It simply causes more problems than it solves by overwhelming the basin in smaller storms. So our proposal was to tie it in downstream of the basin, so at least the water's not going over land, but we, we believe that that'll help the basin function better, at least that's what the calculations showed.
You're not discharging onto the neighbor property to the south, are you?
Only the rear leaders are, but again, that, considering that we're taking everything else and cutting it off, that's a drastic reduction in runoff to the neighbor.
There's no other direction or area that the rear leaders can float to?
No, based on the drop-off of the property, we have really no feasible way of picking those leaders up, just because the property drops so steeply into the neighbor. And again, that's really an existing condition, but we've taken, you know, I mean, our property was 17% impervious existing, and all of that flowed to the neighbor. Now we're talking about 3% or 4% impervious heading to the neighbor, and the rest of it's cut off and sent to the street. So just by looking at that, you can see it's going to be a drastic reduction.
You're going down from 17 to 3?
In terms of rough percentages of impervious that head to the neighbor, yeah, but even in terms of overall drainage area, it, it's, the reduction of what that, that depression is going to see is even more pronounced. But like I said, in the 100-year storm, the set, the elevation of the floodplain is a 71, so it's only two, two, three feet lower than the neighbor's actual driveway. So, you know, that's going to be a giant bowl of water in larger storms, no matter what, and none of that has anything to do with our property. That's simply a function, water backing up from the stream is going to backflow from that pipe and fill up that, that bowl that he's created on that side. And other than that, we will comply with all the other comments. Just skipping down to the additional agency approvals, again, we, we have the planning, Somerset County Planning Board approval, we have applications into the conservation district and DEP, as well as DOT. We were, again, requesting a waiver from providing a DNR canal submission, simply because it's, it's exempt as a minor project. And then our previous concerns about the fire officials letter, we would comply with everything except the, the fire truck turnaround, which due to our narrowness of our lot, we simply cannot provide.
Again, as was explained at the last meeting, should a cross easement occur in the future, there may be a way to loop the fire truck around instead of having to back out onto 206.
Right. Mr. Maskey, anything additional?
Nothing additional.
Mr. White?
Nothing. I have a couple things, please.
Yep, sure.
All right, so referring back to the May 31st Environmental Commission letter, is, so with the new, with the new plans, is the limits of the site improvement still coming in 10, 10 feet of the wetlands buffer?
We are within 10 feet, I would say, but the, the amount of work that's being done there is less, so we, we've pulled the parking lot back a little bit. It's really the, just the trash enclosure that's, that's within that distance.
So again, you just have to take care of that, look after that during construction about that buffer?
We would, normally, we would stake that out, no matter what, provide a silt fence line stakeout in it, you know, upstream of where that is to ensure that that's protected.
And then some of the other items from that letter, everything is still the same, even with the new plans, but you put a permit in for an LOI, right?
Yes.
You haven't got that yet. DRCC, you said you're exempt, same impervious coverage, 17% or?
Our percentage is essentially the same, where it's, it was 17.2 existing, 24.2 proposed. It's essentially the same as we previously proposed.
Okay. Could you just take a minute and just tell me a little bit more about that permit that you got to do, and what you're going to do with that depression area?
It's a flood hazard area permit. Basically, it's because the water backs up, when the neighbor constructed the driveway and elevated it, they cut off this area, and there was a buried pipe that wasn't identified before because it was overgrown, that provides a link between the two sides. So it's, it's not functioning at this point very well, but it does provide a connection. So at elevation 71, which we barely encroach on with, only with the driveway entrance, the rest of the development is well outside that limit. So we have to get a, a fill permit, basically to balance out the fill volumes between what we have to fill for the driveway, and we have to compensate by, by basically taking out a little bit of dirt so that we can provide that flood volume back and have net equality pre and post.
So what does that mean in layman's terms? You're kind of replacing some of the dirt that you're taking out, or?
We're basically just moving dirt on the site, we're taking it out of one part of the floodplain, we're adding it to another to accommodate the driveway. It's a net zero change to the floodplain, and that's all they're verifying. There's no, there's no repairing buffer impacts, it's, it's really only about 10 to 15 feet of the very front of our driveway that encroaches on that elevation, and we're going to compensate for that by taking a little bit of dirt out adjacent to the for that by taking a little bit of dirt out adjacent to the building to just have those, those volumes equal out.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not a hydrogeologist here, but I mean, I would just consider trying to put any type of vegetation in there that might be conducive to soaking up some of that water, like some type of bio swell, but again, I'm not an expert on it, just a recommendation, you know, if you want to look at it.
Within the areas we're disturbing, we have no problem doing further plantings and vegetation in those areas. We, we don't really want to put anything, we don't want to put any structures or anything in the floodplain?
Right.
But upstream of that, I mean, we certainly can.
I mean, I'll leave that up to you, but just a recommendation.
Understood.
Are there any issues with the grading of that when that's, so, no, okay. Any other questions or comments from the board?
Just a question, what are you going to use for screening on the south side of that building with it going from, you know, the original one was, you know, one story going up to two?
Well, so the part, the building is 15.4 feet from the, from the property line in terms of screening. One other change that we had was, in terms of the trees that we're taking out, we were previously taking out a few more, but because we were able to shift our parking lot away, we're actually able to preserve some of the larger trees that are along the property line, so those will remain, it reduced what our compensation requirements were, and now we're providing all of that onsite. Because we dressed up the appearance of the building, we hadn't proposed anything in that 15-foot area in between. To the west, we are proposing, proposing a shrub row beyond the parking lot with some, also some trees as screening, the majority, the rest of the land is either the existing trees which we're not removing, or it'll be maintained lawn area.
I was more concerned with the view from that property just south of you, that's...
How the property from the south looks towards ours?
Right.
Yeah, like I said, it's, it's a row, for the parking lot area, it's a row of shrubs with some intermixed trees, which are going to separate his view from our parking lot, and behind the building, we do have some shrubs and some trees to kind of break up that facade in the back because it is a drop-off.
Right, that's what I was more concerned about, the facade of the two-story building there.
Yeah, because it, it has such a high side there because of the drop-off, we do have a row of landscaping along the base of that, of that building.
You're still proposing to replace 42 trees on the site?
Yes, and now we have the room to accommodate it because our parking lot shrank.
Some of them will be in the buffer zone, but we're all right with that.
Yeah, I think, I mean, currently, the, the buffer really isn't even functioning as one, it's utilized, it's lawn, that should, you know, really improve the situation back there and restore it to a natural state.
But that'll, that's remaining the same?
Yes.
Okay.
And the headlights from the cars in the parking lot will be sufficiently screened facing south?
With the type of buffer that we've added, we believe so, yes.
Any further questions or comments?
Just a quick question, going back to Mr. White's memo on the grading, number two, the sidewalk spot, I maybe didn't catch if you commented on that, about the ADA compliance?
Simply, we, we thought it complied, but we're just going to add a few more spot grades to prove that it does and provide the contractor a little more security on how he should be grading to ensure that we meet those requirements.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we need a motion to open to the public?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No? Okay, we are open to the public. Anyone that has any questions for this witness, you can come forward? No? Okay, seeing none, motion to close to the public?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
It is the only witness.
Oh, okay, so we can close, okay, again, motion?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nope? Okay, we're closed to the public. All right.
We'll close the public, Mr. Chairman, on this witness, public may come up and make a comment on the overall application if they so desire prior to the final action of the board.
Very good, thank you. Do we have a...
We have no further testimony.
Any other, no other witnesses?
Yes, Chris.
Are you comfortable with the, the drainage plan?
Yes, it's going to improve, I just wanted to demonstrate it to the gentleman that lives next door, when he was here at the last hearing, I wanted him to feel comfortable in it, knowing he wasn't here, I just wanted, into the record, actually.
Comfortable, I just want to make sure you, you're okay with it.
I understand, the town had DOT do some work too in the area?
Be nice to have them come out and do some work, yeah?
Yeah.
But, you know, there's not a lot of DOT work that's going to be going on anytime soon.
Well, if they're not paving the roads, then the drainage plan is obviously...
Sure, sure. Well, just personally, I think the facade and the orientation, the shape, looks much better than the first plan, you know, it follows, I think, what we requested.
I appreciate, I think it definitely gets us closer to where we, we expected, wanted to be, so thank you for your work in doing it.
Yeah, and adding the, the screening of the, of the parking towards the road is, is helpful too, yeah. Okay, are we, yes, Mr. Maskey?
Yeah, just to clarify, what are we going to require, so it'll be four variances, you added, in addition to the minimum lot width, maximum front yard setback, and minimum floor area ratio, you're adding a parking variance. As far as the waivers, the first four bullets of my letter, you're still requesting waivers for those, it has to do with the orientation to the front. The lighting, you're proposing a reasonable alternative to the metal halide, you're going to do LED, so we wouldn't necessarily require, consider that a waiver. Number six, under lighting, the light fixtures attached to the exterior of the building shall be architecturally compatible with the style, et cetera, you'll comply with that?
No objection, yes.
You don't need a waiver for that. The interconnected parking areas, you do need a waiver still for that because you're not interconnecting. You still need a waiver for the driveway and side yard exceeding 30%, still need that waiver. You need a waiver for the 25-foot wide aisle, still, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and the 18-foot long parking spaces?
Yes.
Need a waiver for that. And the signs, you don't need a waiver, you say you will comply?
We will.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, as Mr. Maskey went through the list, there was one open item that I don't believe the board has addressed, and that's the parking issue.
The wa, the waiver of the, the three spaces?
It's a variance requesting for, that there are three fewer spaces than we'll require. If the witness can indicate to the board for purposes of the record what the options the applicant is seeking, and maybe also to the extent he knows, how much additional interior space is going to be no longer available to the offices, to put and take into account the hallway that now has to go into the building.
Sure. So the alternatives that we propose are either to allow a three-stall deficiency, or reduce the parking stall width to nine feet, which is a generally industry-accepted standard, and that would allow us to put an extra stall in each of the three sections of parking to get the 40, excuse me, the 37. In terms of the size of the building, again, we're, we're proposing two stories of 4,600, so that would be 9,200 square feet. The previous proposal was for 8,480, and that was basically exclusively office space. We've estimated the interior usable space at around 7,800, I would say is conservative in terms of what we have now, so a significant delta in there is your hallways, your stairways, your elevators, you know, all of that area is not really associated with the particular office unit, so in terms of use, you know, both schemes, you know, are fairly comparable. This one shows a variance, but realistically, it probably has less of a demand than the previous, the previous proposal.
So is it safe to say, if the board will allow me to ask, is it safe to say that we're talking about the requirements of three more spaces, but the actual usable square footage is actually 600 square feet less?
Which would require two less stalls, correct. But again, the ordinance is based on gross floor area, so technically it is a deficiency.
So it's up to the board whether they want to reduce the size to nine by 18, or whether they want to agree to the waiver at 34?
The nine requires a waiver anyway, right?
What? The nine would require a waiver anyway, right? Correct.
I don't know if that would be, if that would be a waiver as opposed to a variance?
Variance would require a variance. We either would require a variance.
Mr. Maskey, do you have any preference? Would you rather have...
Yeah, I think the 34 would be adequate, so basically what you're saying is the net office space would require actually less parking?
Correct.
Yeah, I, a nine-foot stall is acceptable in certain instances, if you have a lot of in-and-out traffic, the 10-foot is a little bit better. I would lean towards keeping the 10-foot spaces and allowing them to go at the 34 spaces total. Mr. White?
I concur, I think the board, over its history, has always liked the 10-foot wide spaces, been a proponent of it for years, and every time I go to Home Depot, I think about it.
Yeah, especially as a doctor's office.
Yeah, I agree.
People may need extra space opening doors, that would be our problem.
Yep. All right.
So you're still, you'll need a variance to, you're still technically required to have 37, but you're providing 34 for the reasons you just put on the record?
Yes.
Okay.
So is, is the application complete with that variance?
That would cover it?
The request, yes?
I believe this bill, that you, was there any other waivers you listed? Okay.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
Did we get any, excuse me, I didn't see any comments from our fire official? It was on the last, the problem is there's no turnaround, there's no room to turn vehicle around. Did you address fire hydrants at all?
He had comments regarding that, and we have no objection, we're complying with those, it was just simply the turnaround one we couldn't do, everything else we're fine with.
Whether for the hydrants for onsite, or...
I think, I believe there was a request to either see where it was, and if not, bring one to the property from the water line, which again, we, we wouldn't mind doing, no problem there.
To make them private?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Bernstein, do we need to open to the public one more time for general comments? Okay, motion to open to the public?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No? Okay. This is the last opportunity for anyone from the public to come forward and ask questions or make comments in general about this application. Nope, seeing none, and a motion to close to the public?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nope? Eyes have it? Okay, so we're closed to the public. So who wants to tackle the, the motion?
I could tackle it. I'd like to make a motion to approve Dr. Kumar Raswamy, 688 Route 206, file 16 PB-04 SRV Block 178, Lot 16-668.
Mr. Bernstein?
With all the waivers, and with all the variant, the four variances and all waivers complying with all the requirements of the various township professionals, to the extent mentioned on the record, and approval by same.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Beeson?
Yes.
Secretary Julian?
Yes.
Mr. Finnard?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Ms. Beckerina?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor...
Yes.
Mayor Malcor?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dr. Morello?
Yes, and thank you again for those changes and improvements, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, there are two applications on for next week's meeting, as well as, I believe, two resolutions. There'll be Zemkatawicz and the continuation of the Meadowbrook at Hillsborough application, as well as the resolutions on Cisco and Country Classics.
For Meadowbrook, do we need to watch the video for the initial presentation?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so for those who, do, do we know who was here for that? Do you have that by chance?
I don't have it on the...
No, okay.
Get everybody's email.
Yeah, because we may need more people to watch the video, okay. Any other meeting changes?
That's it, Phil.
That's it? Okay. And a motion to close?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nope? Eyes have it, we're closed.
Nice.
Thank you.